All right, good evening. Time being 7:00 P.M. The forum of the planning board being present will bring this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Agenda Item A, Approval of Minutes from April 29th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 29th, 2024.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We're going to do a roll call tonight because Mr. Duffy is here virtually, so we'll do a roll call. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Fratelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes A as well, so yes, wrong minutes. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Committee reports, any committee reports, any of the members wish to make it this time?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Duffy also? All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Chair votes A as well. Moving on to Town Planner's Report, Mr. Love?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item of note, we have one new public hearing scheduled for the September 9th meeting, and that is going to be for 611 Main Street for site plan review, land disturbance permit, solar and use special permit for proposed eco-auto expansion. They are looking to add additional service space to service their hybrid and electric vehicles, as well as a solar canopied parking area and some additional charging stations. So they'll be coming in with that, and that is currently under review with our peer reviewers. Next item, which we may choose to table until we have Mr. Champa with us again and Mr. Duffy with us in person, was some proposed language for exemptions for the digital menu boards. Again, we've been talking about how we have a lot of menu boards coming in that letter of the bylaw qualify as electronic message board signs, but the board kind of recognizing that they're a little bit different than your traditional electronic message board signs, so I've included some language to kind of chew on, and we can revisit that another time. Item number three, the Towns Engineering Consultant, EA Engineering, is beginning design work for a wetland groundwater and floodplain restoration project at two sites in Tewksbury, one of them being the Molly Drive former landfill site and the other being the Poplar Street area. They are the, excuse me, the Poplar Street area is the location of the decommissioned South Street wellfields, and as I mentioned, the Molly Drive site near the Knights of Columbus along the south bank of the Shawshing River. EA is tentatively scheduling to perform wetland delineation and ecological assessments at both of these sites between August 22nd and 23rd of this week, weather-dependent, during the daytime. So the town is distributing this notice to make sure that nearby residents are aware of this work, and it's going to be occurring, and not to be alarmed if they see any kind of activity in that area. And the Engineering Division created a dedicated project page called, for the website called tewksbury-ma.gov/Nrda-restoration, and if anybody has any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, or I can direct you to our Engineering Division. And last item, a lot of you may be aware that the governor signed the housing bond bill last week, had a number of items of interest in there, primarily concern for this board or really anybody looking at our zoning are the ADUs by right. And just to kind of break it down a little bit, it makes a new definition for what is considered an accessory dwelling unit. I won't belabor the point by reading the definition, but suffice it to say that the major provisions are that it can be attached or detached, it does not have to be owner-occupied, and the size prescriptions in the law are that it can be a maximum of 900 square feet or half the gross floor living area of the home, whichever is less. So for example, if someone has a 1,500-square-foot home, they don't get a 900-square-foot ADU, they get a 750-square-foot ADU. And what by right means is that all you need to do is apply for a building permit, and provided that it meets all of the prescribed setbacks that already exist in the zoning bylaw, they would just need that building permit. And this definition of accessory dwelling unit is going to exist independently of the Towns Family Suite definition, which board members and some applicants in the audience will be aware that that allows for an accessory dwelling unit for family only to be incorporated into the existing home, has to be attached, and it is allowed up to 1,000 square feet. The other part of that law is that this implementation of the definition will not take effect until 180 days until after the law was signed, which puts us approximately at February 2nd, 2025. So folks that are clamoring to, you know, apply for those building permits for the ADUs by right, which we've already started receiving phone calls for downstairs in the office, that does not take effect until February 2nd of 2025. The other major item of note from a zoning perspective is basically a bit of an undoing of what is known as merger doctrine. So for folks unfamiliar, if a subdivision was created prior to the adoption of current zoning, so for Tewksbury in particular, the town adopted one acre and 150 feet of frontage zoning on September 12th, 1956. We have a lot of neighborhoods that were created prior to that date due to the adoption of one-acre zoning, and in those neighborhoods, a lot of houses were built, a lot of lots were left unbuilt, vacant, but people were buying them up in chunks, meaning that they were maybe buying adjacent lots and saving one for later. In Section 6 of Mass. General Law 40A, the Zoning Act, says that if you own two adjacent lots in common ownership and they don't meet today's zoning, then for zoning purposes they merge. The housing bond bill basically undoes that and says if you own, for example, two 10,000 square-foot lots next to each other in the same neighborhood, one has a house on it and one doesn't, they may be eligible to now build on that lot. It's primarily a function of the older subdivisions that were created, again, prior to the adoption of one-acre zoning where you have entire clusters of 10,000, 20,000 square-foot lots that just don't meet today's zoning. So that's something that I think folks are going to be paying a lot of attention to. And that's enough talking for me. I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can move on.
So I just have a comment, Alex. It seems to me that new signing by the governor is going to cause some type of chaos in some of communities, ours as well, I would think, you know, when they start putting these, like, smaller homes and smaller, you know, in-law units, not that I'm against them, but onto some of these smaller lots and so forth and so on.
Yeah, so they do still have to meet the bulk dimensional requirements, which for Tewksbury are 25-foot front yard setbacks, 15-sided rear, maximum of 15% lot coverage, so they can't just start covering their properties with accessory dwelling units. And I imagine that it's probably going to cause a bit more of an issue in communities that don't have a path for accessory dwelling units at all. We have the family suite, it's a little bit different, it's a little larger, so folks may still try to go for those, but yeah, they will be allowed to do them without discretionary approval now.
Good. All set, thank you.
All right. All right, so that takes care of that. All right, before we start the main hearings, I'll just note, obviously, we're missing one member tonight, so for any of the petitioners who are coming forward tonight, you know, depending on whether or not you are or aren't looking for a vote this evening, I will note, obviously, we have only four members present, so take that into account when you make your decision. We do anticipate having all of our members at the next meeting, that I'm aware of, so we'll leave it up to you if we get to that point, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware. All right, great with that. Bring it to Agenda Item C, which is 134 Salem Street, Family Suite Special Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
It's almost.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion being seconded. Again, we're going to do a roll, so Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm afraid I may have missed that question.
It's just to waive the public reading. To waive the public reading.
I'm sorry.
To waive the public reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, aye, I agree.
All right, Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Lizardi?
Aye.
Chair votes A as well. All right, with that, do we have anybody here for 134 Salem Road? Want to come on up?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize in advance, the audio is a little tinny for some reason here.
Okay.
So I'm doing the best I can to hear everything.
Good enough. All right, once you get settled, if you give your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Hi, good evening, I'm Amy Tamaro.
Anna Duffy.
I'm here to apply for the family suite for my mother's home, and my husband and I are looking to make additional room for my mom. I'm an only child, so I'll be taking care of my mom down the road, so we're looking to make some more space for her.
All right, Ms. Lizardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Overall, square footage, is it 800?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, kind of the internal connection, looks like it goes through the dining room into the mudroom?
Yes.
All my questions.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you on the sewer, are you on sewer at the house?
We are on septic right now, but we do understand that we will be moving to a, the sewer connection to the city, I'm sorry, to the town, and we do have the list of contractors for pipe layers that will be contacting.
Awesome. I love the idea of your mom coming in and you taking care of mom, and that's what it's all about, so I've seen the plans, the plans were great.
Thank you.
And I have no problem with approving this family suite.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I also reviewed the plans, they're very thorough, they're very detailed, and I have no issues with this application either, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The chair is all set as well. With that, I'll open up to the audience, anyone in the audience, any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Making motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Lizardi?
Yeah, your name. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Chair votes A as well. All right, so with that, what is the pleasure of the board for the family suite special permit?
Making motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approved a family suite permit for 134 Salem Road.
All right, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Lizardi?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
And the chair votes A as well. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Good rest of the night.
Thank you, you too.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item D, 792 Main Street.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Burgette Souza with Keach Nordstrom Associates, here representing the applicant. So since our last meeting, we reviewed the comments received from Beta in their review and made a bunch of edits to the plans in order to address those comments, as well as the comments that were raised at the last hearing. So there's no real significant changes in the plans that are drastic in terms of site layout or the grading and drainage approach. We are still looking to move ahead with utilizing the existing foundation because of the good integrity that was installed in 1998, and utilizing some of the existing site features in order to make this stormwater system function for today's standards. So when we spoke last, there were a couple waiver requests that would have to be required in order for this approval, so we've adjusted some of the waivers, and I'd like to just walk through them real quick. One of the requests was for the curbing requirement of requiring curbing throughout the entirety of the site. So anywhere there is new pavement proposed and new functionality of the site, we've proposed curbing, with the exception of what we discussed at the last hearing that for stormwater purposes, utilizing a flush concrete sidewalk with a pavement and using curb stop bumper, wheel bumpers in order to protect that walkway. And that's just because of a cover issue. We have very limited depth to work with. The groundwater elevation was determined to be roughly 118, so that means we need to maintain two feet of separation, so that six inches of curb reveal is very crucial to us. And the reason we made this request is because of that issue there, but also because this site was already developed. The existing parking area, paved area onsite does not have curbing along the portion to the southeast property line, and it functions normally. There's kind of a berm that's built up between that and next parcel, so it directs stormwater, you know, towards the existing drywell onsite, and we were not, the applicant is not looking to disturb any of this area because it is a functioning business. The next is the non-residential driveway requirements. When we spoke last, we discussed how the, there are two existing driveways here. We proposed using the second one just for increased site mobility, vehicle movements and whatnot. You guys did express that you might want to see that exit become a right turn only, so we have proposed that. So that one second driveway is within the 200 feet of the existing, so it'll function as a right-hand out turn only, avoid some of that conflict with Nelson Avenue and the existing driveway. The next request was for an interior driveway to allow for a 12-foot instead of a 14-foot. This is just the rear internal driveway. It is a one-way driveway with a stop sign and some pavement markings to indicate that, as well as a one-way sign. It's just for use, more so for delivery trucks or, there's an existing door, overhead door in the back of the building there that Deadbeat Customs uses, so having that drive back there is just beneficial to them. The next is allowing the parking along the front property line. That item was discussed last, taking a look at maybe if we could fit it anywhere else, but the site is so compact and needing that space for stormwater to meet requirements for TSS removal and phosphorus removal is really important, so we still did not make any changes along those lines. The next is the required landscape buffer, a 20-foot buffer requirement where the project abuts residential use. So as discussed, and we showed this on the plans because it was missing last time, that zoning line is right on the back property line, and the railway is actually zoned as residential. So because of the way the site is already existently set up, there is no, there's no buffer there, it's like two, three feet maybe to the edge of pavement, and we're carrying that same distance, so that was the reason for that waiver request. Although that area is designated residential, it is the old railway bed, it's very well-vegetated during the summertime, a little bit more open during the winter, but there is sort of a makeshift buffer there with that vegetation. And lastly, from the minimum performance standards for regulated activities, this is for erosion control structures to be located within no closer than 15 feet from an abutting property line. We're requesting this waiver because obviously we want to make sure that we have erosion control measures set up properly to control any sediment from leaving the site during construction, and therefore, because of the limits of our project tying into existing driveways, improving that existing stormwater basing, that would make it infeasible to be able to construct anything if we were not allowed that waiver. So with that being said, the only other real thing to note was for the signage permit, and it was brought up that we needed to remove one of the potential locations for wall sign for a business, so we did do that, adjusted the requirements for the wall signs based on the unit size, and we have also made a change to the sign to make sure that it would include the actual address, 792 Main Street. So I believe that covers everything that was changed significantly from the last meeting, and that was brought up during the construction, so if you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you.
Let's start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of questions I have for you. How are you with Beta as far as there are any outstanding issues with them, or are they okay, are they on board with them? Did you try to change?
So there is a, there is a couple of comments that we did receive that will require further follow-up. One of them is just straight, simple, it was an error including a file when we were combining our PDF for the drainage report. That was the mouting analysis for our stormwater infiltration systems. We already have that completed, I can add that to the drainage report and have that sent out tomorrow. And then the other follow-up items were things that required either board discussion or they're minor, like adding a note to a plan, adjusting a call-out, stuff along those lines.
So nothing major that can't be resolved?
No, definitely not.
With some communication back and forth?
Correct.
Okay, because we don't meet again for another month or so, I think, so.
Yep.
I'd hate to put this on hold again for the project for you, so. So can you explain the driveway situation to me again? So the one is going to be looking at the building from the front, you want to add the one on the side where the other businesses are going to be, right?
Yes, and that's utilizing the existing curb cut that's there today.
Okay.
So the end of the Main Street improvements that were completed is just before that curb cut location, so we would utilize that area, that existing curb cut, just to allow for anybody using, you know, going to these businesses on this new side of the aisle to be able to just pull out quick right-hand turn.
The other driveway is going to be staying the same, in and out, if you wanted to.
Yep.
If you wanted to go left on Main Street heading south.
You can.
You can do that.
Yes.
If you go around the building, then you're stuck going right on.
Well, the drive aisle in the front is a two-way.
Yep.
It's 24 feet, so if they needed to go left, they could pull out and queue in that drive aisle until it's clear for them to pull out.
Right, 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 okay. Other than that, it's going to be in and out on the right side and just out on the left side, looking at it and going right towards the lower area.
Yes, exactly.
All right, so I have a question. So without the waiver of 6.111C, looking to infringe on the 20-foot setback, would you not have enough parking for the site?
We would not. We have the minimum required amount right now. So this layout, if we lose that, we would be here for a waiver request anyways to lower the required parking, which is not ideal for some, for use such as this.
Yep, okay. I mean, I'm all in favor of supporting businesses and what they want to do and their improvements and so forth. I just have a hard time looking at all the waivers that you want.
Yeah.
And I'm like, you know, why can't people, not you in particular, why can't developers and applicants come in and abide by our zoning regulations rather than have to be looking for waivers all the time, all the time, all the time, all the time, you know? It bothers me to some degree, but not enough to say no to you to not allow parking at this spot, but, you know. So with that being said, I think I'm all set right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Lizardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, just a couple of quick questions on the kind of narrow driveway in the back. You mentioned there's a loading door over there, is there already a driveway back there?
So where the concrete pad ends, right here?
Yep.
It, this drive ends here to allow access for that, so we would just be tying into that existing paved area and carrying it to the back, backside of the parking lot on the other side.
Okay. In the primary use case there, it's just sort of drop-offs for that loading bay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I guess then similarly on kind of the loading area, I saw the loading zones kind of depicted right across from the dumpster, how will that work?
So the loading area is located actually directly in front of that dumpster area. One, that makes sure, you know, nobody's parking there, preventing any dumpster pickup or anything like that, but also it's just functionality, it's kind of a dead space. That back area of the parking lot existently, that's where they do their unloading anyways, so picking that space and marking that out there seemed like the best location, and having that additional drive in the back, that's, you know, more for that functionality, it allows them to have some access there for the businesses on the other side here to, you know, get whatever their materials are into their doors.
All right. I think that's all my questions. I think this kind of looks like a good improvement over the present site. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a little bit of an issue with the reduction in the width of the roadway behind the building. I just don't really see a need for it. I understand there's a concrete pad there, you know, there isn't any reason I can think of that that couldn't just be incorporated into the paved roadway going around the back of the building. You know, the little strip of quote-unquote "snow storage" there, it looks like a pretty kind of an impractical place for snow storage to make, up against the building there. But, so that being said though, I don't have an issue with the waiver to move the parking spaces along Main Street inside the 15-foot buffer there. I think that's consistent with many other businesses right along Main Street, right in that area, you know, even diagonally across the street where the, you know, there's businesses, there's a building that, where, you know, the nose is right up to the existing sidewalk, so I don't have a problem with that waiver. I'm a little curious why the sidewalk sort of just ends at the new exit, though. You know, it looks like that we've created a little bit of a dead end on the sidewalk there, like, why doesn't that extend to the lot line? So that's something I'd like to maybe have addressed. And do you want to answer a couple of those questions, or do you want me to continue here?
Yeah, so the sidewalk is, you're talking about at the rear, along the, bringing that out to the railroad bed, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, along the, along the north side of Main Street, yeah. Yeah, so basically.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
The sidewalk just dead ends at the little, at the little island exit, you know, the little island next to the exit there, the right turn only exit.
Okay, so that is actually one of the items that Beta had requested the board to discuss. So if they want, if you guys would like to see us extend that all the way to the property line, that's certainly not a problem at all. We knew it was something that might want to be seen, we just matched existing, what's out there right now, where the Main Street improvements ended, but we can certainly make that change if that's something that you want to see for the sidewalk.
Okay, and I think it's probably going to end up being more of a DPW issue, but I just don't understand why. I mean, you're probably looking at, you know, if the sidewalk came from the building on the other side, who connects that sidewalk there on your property? So that's something that I would like to consider.
Okay.
Couple other quick things. First of all, I mean, yeah, I realize you have certain constraints here, the building was built 45 years ago, and I agree that there's, that there are definitely some changes in zoning and building codes and so on and so forth in that time period, so I understand that. But in some of these things that DPW related, it looks to me like you have a number of issues to potentially work out with engineering, and we'll just let that take its course. But if you could just explain to me what a Zone 2 wellhead project zone is?
All right, so that is a protected area for Massachusetts DEP, so that just says if you are proposing stormwater improvements in that area, then you have to hit additional requ- to hit additional requirements. So for example, your separation from groundwater would be different. You'd have to make sure that you're hitting more stringent TSS removal, phosphorus removal, nutrient removal type items. And that's pretty much the basis.
Okay, I understand that. So can I assume that you're addressing or have addressed those issues?
Yes, and additionally, our project, the, only that existing portion of, like, half the parking lot that's existing out there today is located within that area. All the improvements that are proposed are outside of that protected area.
Very good. And then I have a couple other questions here. You're, and I know I'm jumping around a little bit here, but that's the way my notes go. So on the sign application there, it's, I see the signage and I understand the square footage and so on and so forth. Is that intended to be an electronic sign, or is that just going to be the kind of sign that you have right now?
Let me just refer the same. It would be the same as it is now, so not electric or anything like that.
Okay, okay, very well. I would like just to triple-check on the way out the door after this project is approved to make sure, because occasionally, especially on a tight lot, your landscape, sometimes the landscaping has to be changed at the 11th hour because it conflicts with underground utilities. So I would like to have your engineer confirm with a landscape overlay over the underground utilities plan, just to make sure that there aren't going to be any conflicts, any major conflicts there.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Okay. Let's see. And there's something about a monitoring well that I read. Is that something that's in the works, or is it something that's existing there?
No, so that was, that was an item that I had brought up at the last hearing. Beta, when they took a look at the vicinity, there was some confusion on as to how close this property was to a reported spill that had happened, I think, back in the 80s. I don't recall the exact date. But that site is essentially where the Enterprise is. None of those monitoring wells were located on our property. I raised the question to the board to see if that's something that DPW was going to want to see. I have not heard anything back from that, if they wanted to see anything with that or not. But it was not on our property. There was a problem at the BP service station, and like I said, the old Enterprise, the business that occupied the Enterprise lot, but nothing on our property.
Thank you. And there's one other quick question here, and this again is more towards engineering, but just so, just so that I can throw the question out there that I read. Has a pollution protection plan been provided?
We have not provided one. It's something that we typically provide for our applicants once approved for projects. If it's something that the board wants to see, we can absolutely prepare that. This project, the disturbance, is under one anchor, so they will not have to file a NITI permit with the EPA. But having a SWIP plan together is always ideal for contractors, obviously.
Okay, all right. And so those, Mr. Chairman, those are really my only concerns. I'm generally in favor of this project as it's presented. And as long as the applicant feels comfortable working out some of those issues with DPW and so forth, I'm very much in favor of this project moving forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Yeah, so I'll agree with Mr. Duffy on the sidewalk. Might as well have that finished, and, you know, that way if it continues on from there, it's already done, we're not going to be coming back and trying to reinvent the wheel at that last little
Okay.
section. Nobody's going to have any issue with that, correct?
Not to my knowledge, and actually, it was a comment that Beta had pointed out in Comment T6, and they deferred to the town whether the board wanted to extend the sidewalk along Main Street to the southwest corner with transition ramps and curb at the proposed driveway, so.
So unless DPW comes back and says, "Don't do it," I would say, "We say do it."
Okay.
Unless they give you some explanation as to why they would prefer you didn't
Yeah.
or something. I mean, that seems to make the most sense, because without them saying one way or the other, the only thing I could think of is if for some reason they have some reason to not want it, they can say so. You don't have to come back here because of it.
Okay.
I'd rather just make it, you know, you're going to do it unless told by DPW to hold off for some reason.
Okay.
And then as far as that exit goes, you know, the arrow needs to stay painted on the ground
Yep.
in perpetuity, clear and, you know, visible at all times. And if it starts to get worn out, it's going to be repainted again. Same thing on signage saying, you know, "Do not enter," you know, all that. Because I don't want this to suddenly turn into a, "It's a lot quicker if I just go in there."
Right, absolutely.
You know, so I want to make sure it's clear to anyone who thinks they're going to use that. Can't stop them if they do what they're not supposed to do, but then there's no questions that they absolutely did something they should not have done.
Yeah.
When they meet up head-on with somebody coming out there.
I did have one question, actually, and that was one of the outstanding items from Beta, whether or not that you guys wanted to see just before, just before that driveway, no-left-turn sign placed on Main Street heading southbound. So it would be located right here.
So someone coming on Main Street.
Yeah, so as you're traveling down, there would be a sign located roughly right here saying, "No left turn." Saying you can't turn into this driveway.
And you'd be putting it where?
It would be on the southbound side, in the right-of-way, just before the driveway location.
But we can't
I would think that would be a DOT expression.
Yeah, unless DOT asks you for it, then same thing, fine.
Okay.
We can't tell you to do it because DOT is going to decide whether or not that should be there or not.
All right.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it if DOT wants it, but otherwise, you know. I mean, I think the signage, as you're coming in, telling people to not do it, that we do control, is, you know, should be sufficient unless told by DOT that you need more.
Okay.
And then that's on them out there to tell you what they want, so. I have no issue with the path in the back either. I also, I can't tell for sure if it's absolutely something that was considered by the fire department. They just said this was a much better layout than what was there, so I suspect that being able to go around the building without having to do three-point turns is beneficial to them. So I have no issue with having that back there. If it, even if it only helps them, should they have to come in and out of there? You know, I'd rather make it easy for them
Right.
if they should ever have to go there than to not, so. Otherwise, I'm all set with the rest. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to open up to the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, but I'm going to hand you this.
Actually, I'm going to, if you'll allow, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to give Ms. Sousa mine with a little bit of my serial killer handwriting to grab those two other conditions. So these were drafted this afternoon based on the Beta comments and the outstanding comments from the board. And if you'll allow, Mr. Chairman, just a few other notes. So the items that Beta deferred to the town for consideration, one of them was the sidewalk extension to the southwest corner, which it sounds like we're all set with that. The next one was to confirm the tree plantings are allowed to be placed within 20 feet of the sewer taking. That's something that I'll have to route through DPW, since they're kind of the keeper of the utilities.
So I did read the deed for that, and it reads during construction for anything to be removed, but it didn't have any provisions for post-construction, so.
I'll route that through the Department of Public Works, just for kind of some belt and suspenders there. And the other item was the proposed 10-foot setback for the infiltration basin. That's something Beta said defers to the town regarding the applicability of a 10-foot setback for the modified infiltration basin. So again, I'll route that through DPW to see if there's any commentary there. And I think that's primarily, just allow me one second. Yeah, and then otherwise, just those compiled waivers and conditions with the additional to 1-4 maintaining the striping and painting on the pavement in perpetuity, as well as directional signs, so that folks don't take traffic into their own hands.
So there'll be those, satisfy these, if we get to that point, those things will be contingent, getting that stuff squared away and those answers and compliance with those before, you know, the permit will be all the way through.
Okay.
Okay, and then what you've got listed there. So you can look at that while I open it up to the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? I hope you read fast, because no one's getting up. All right, so with that, we'll give you a moment to take a look at that.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to confirm as well, that the decision will not be put forth for signature and filing until the few housekeeping items from Beta are also addressed.
Okay. Officer, do you want to see this?
Nope.
I'm sorry? Looks good.
Yep.
All right, so then before I close the hearing, I'll just ask you, do you wish us to close the hearing as the board stands now and render a decision?
Yes, I believe so.
Any outstanding issues? Any outstanding issues? Mr. Duffy?
No issues.
All right, neither does the chair. Okay, so with that, I'll take a motion on closing the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Mr. Lozardi?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. As to the site plan review, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the site plan review at 792 Main Street as proposed with the conditions and waivers requested.
Okay, so we have the motion made. Let me just
Second.
I'm going to table that for a second, so I can do the waivers first, just for order purposes. So
Sure.
We have the motion, a motion on the waivers for the five waivers as proposed this evening and discussed. Mr. Vitale, do I have that motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve, I mean, to approve the waivers as submitted.
Mr. Duffy, I'll take your second. Do you have a second on that?
Yes.
All right, so the motion made and seconded. So just as to the waivers, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
Aye.
Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Lozardi?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. I'm sorry, and then the continuation of the motion being made by Mr. Vitale on the site plan review, as discussed this evening, with the conditions as discussed, and the outstanding issues to be resolved prior to the final decision going in. So that will be a contingent decision by the board pending those, housekeeping and finalizing those issues. All right, so we have that motion from Mr. Vitale. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Mr. Lozardi?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That leaves us with the land disturbance permit. Do I have a motion on the land disturbance permit?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the land disturbance permit.
All right, have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Lozardi?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. All right, that takes care of it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, one more piece. Sign special permit, because they are asking for more than one wall-mounted sign on the building total, and it's not on a corner lot.
All right, so sign special permit. So do I have a motion on the sign special permit, which would include the discussion tonight on the signs?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, a motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Mr. Lozardi?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, so unanimous. All right. All set, good luck.
I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Do you need this back? Okay.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item E, 820 Livingston Street, Unit 13, use special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made and seconded. Mr. Lozardi?
Aye.
Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Do we have anybody here for 820 Livingston Street? All right, once you folks get settled, if you give your name for the record, floor is yours.
Good evening.
Pull the chair up if you want. Want to pull the chair up?
Yeah. Yeah, please, John. Good evening, my name is Rosala Sidroni, and I have a cold, so please forgive me if I sound like a frog.
Giulia Sidroni.
All right, and then if you want to just let us know who the other two folks are, just because they're at the table?
Sure, this is Mr. John Peterson, he's the realtor, our realtor, and this is Mr. Beran Garland, who is an observer, basically.
Okay, floor is yours. Just let us know what it is you're doing and what it is you're looking for.
Okay. So we are in the process of purchasing 820 Livingston Street, Unit 13. We have, my husband and I, well, he's, we've been in business for 27 years. Our business basically is renting law forklifts, and we maintenance our own machines, he's the mechanic. And basically, what we want to do is, we have been in the building that we're on right now, that we're in now, for 25 years, and unfortunately, the landlord needs the space back. So this is the reason why we came upon 820 Livingston Street. What we would like to do is basically continue doing our business, you know, for the same purpose, renting and, you know, repairing our own machine, minor repairs, and hopefully that we can move forward with our business.
And I want to just add to that, that I'm the only one. I got no employees, I'm by myself.
Yes.
And I got a road truck, I do majority of my work on the road, and it's just basically, I need a place to park them and just bring them in and maybe do a quick service with them, just maintain them. That's it. I mean, like, I don't have a swinging door business, like, because I'm never there. Just basically, the door will be closed, my stuff will be inside, some stuff will be parked outside, and if I come there, it's only me by myself, and just to maintain the equipment, just to get back out to rent. Sometimes the equipment will go out for a year, two years, sometimes it'll go out for a month, but it's always a month. Usually, we do months, we don't do weeks, we don't do days, so we don't have traffic coming in, in and out, you know? So it's just basically, and the only reason I'm getting this is because I was there 27 years, and they need their space back. I mean, I was a good tenant for them, and they loved me, and they hate to see me go, but, you know. After that, I got to retire.
Nope. Not yet.
I'll serious motive.
I'm just, you know, I'm just, I mean, I'm there because, like I said, I got no employees, so it's not like I'm going to have an open-door business, you know? It's basically, I'm just going to drag something in to service it and a few parking spaces outside, and it's, you know.
Also, this is all new to us, so if we seem like that we're a little bit naive on that, you know, your end of it, we apologize, but it's, we've done all the homework we can possibly do with a lot of help of Alex. She's, you know, helped us out quite a bit, so. But I, you know, basically, this is where we're at right now.
All right, very good, thank you.
Easy to get along with, very, very easy to go, get along with everybody. I got more friends than I, I don't have any enemies.
Very good. All right, Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I like to hear the story, it's great, you've been there a long time.
Yeah.
You're not recreating the wheel, you know, you're just going back, doing business just at a different location, and that's great, you know, so.
Thank you.
How much equipment do you have stored there, or is that an issue?
I would like to, I think it comes with three, and I think behind the building, I can park maybe a few more.
Are you asking how many pieces of equipment we have?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, 10.
Okay, yeah.
Between inside and out, I can probably fit them all, but they're always on rent, so they never, I probably won't have
Better off being out than in, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
After that, I'll pay the bills.
Okay.
I make enough to pay the last bill that comes in.
Yeah. Are you going to put a sign at the location for your business?
I can, I don't have to.
Okay. Okay.
I can.
Just figure it out.
I have just a little sign, maybe about a foot by three feet.
You already have it there now, right?
Huh?
Do you have it there now?
No.
No, no, I have it at my, where I am, where I have to get out.
Okay, sure. I'm all set, I'm all in favor of doing what you're doing at that location and much success.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A few more years anyways.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also in favor of this. I don't particularly have too many questions.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Chairman, I had no questions either, but I saw the little, the sketch for the, for the interior and, you know, it all worked fine, I wish the applicant good luck over there and just be careful working on that heavy equipment, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, so, yeah, I have no specific issues, feels pretty, you know, low impact to, you know, to where it's going and what you're going to be doing. So with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this?
Come up to the podium and give us your name and address. You can come, yeah, one at a time.
Hi, Tom Peroni, 820 Livingston Street. I'm in the complex, I'm the treasurer of the complex in which they want to operate their business. We have no parking in there, we have no place for your equipment. I have pictures on my phone, we're having problems now. We have, you know, too many vehicles, we have a hard time with the fire department keeping things clear, so the fire department can make their way in in case anything ever happens. So I'm not against anybody doing business, I'm against, we don't have any room for their 10 pieces of equipment. We don't have any room for any of your equipment. And you can't use that parking along the backside. There's, there's a lot of that, but none of that's available. There's, I'll show you pictures, there's, we're having a problem now with parking. It's a huge issue now, we have people out there fighting now.
But the bay, the bay comes with three parks.
You got to speak into the microphone.
Giulio, speak. Speak into the microphone.
No, go ahead, let him finish. Well, I have other members of my association here as well, I have the president here as well, I'll let him speak.
Hello, my name's Dick Picardo, Tuckspree Auto Repair, I'm also the president. We are having problems with parking, I didn't understand that you had that much equipment. I met with this gentleman once before, but when we received the card from you people, we didn't realize that they were looking for storage, rental, repair at that location. If you people were to come by our location and look, you ought to understand what we're talking about. We run a tight organization, but parking is very tight. I have letters from other owners against it. Soon as they got these letters from the planning board, we have an owner here, we have a neighbor here. It's, we just got no room. We got no room, I don't know where this gentleman would be able to park his equipment. That's why we're here, and I'm, hey, I'm for business too, but it's impossible, it's impossible. You and I spoke before, I had asked you why you had to get a special permit, because when you and I spoke, you said that you were going to work on your equipment. And do you remember the conversation? I said, why would you have to get a special permit to work on your equipment? Then this card came. When this card hit, everybody was in my office, all 12 owners complaining to me about it. That's my piece, sir.
Am I incorrect that should any of these units open up and any of these businesses were to go in, they'd need a use special permit from us?
It depends on the use, so based on the Sidronis application, the use that most closely identifies with what they're trying to do is a, very, very generally speaking, a contractor's yard, and a contractor's yard use does require a special permit. So there are some by right uses that likely would have been able to go in with just a building permit, this is just not one of them.
Okay. Okay, did you have any comments on the?
Yeah, we have somebody else. Rob Bedoni, 841 Livingston Street. On behalf of the neighbors, yeah, I moved in there 30 years ago, and at that time, you know, we thought that the freight train was, was going to be the nuisance. And although Trackside Condos is run as tight as these gentlemen want to do it, there, there are several tenants in there that have actually created more of a nuisance just by way, and I do have photos that, that I printed out, and I'm going to give it to you guys. That place is at absolute capacity, and I know that these gentlemen have tried very hard over the years, we've had conversations with them as the number of vehicles that are going in and out of there on a daily basis, to include the weekends, there's vehicles being test driven up and down the street. I'm very concerned with any addition at this point to that property. You take a look at the over, you know, the overhead aerial view, you can pull it up on Google, it's fairly recent, I took some photos last week. It's, it's really, really at capacity. And the other thing that I would say is before we add any more vehicles, equipment, or anything else to that property, somebody ought to take a soil sample over there. We have a neighborhood of about 10 homes, and in the last five to seven years, we've had three people fail a young age come down with cancer and have passed. In addition to that, we've had a couple more that have contracted cancer. So not, not putting a correlation on that, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I, I, I think to, you know, just to, you know, my opinion, I, I think that's kind of high in that concentrated area. So I'm not sure what's in that ground, but I, I think at this point, adding any more vehicles, anything that's going to drip more oil or anything else at this point is probably not the best idea. And that's just coming from neighbors that live across the street, so. And I, and I'm going to hand, I'll hand, you can keep these, these are just printouts, but it, it gives you an idea of the density that's over there. And like I say, these gentlemen have tried to run a tight ship and have tried to keep their neighbors, you know, intact and in obedience, but, you know, it becomes kind of difficult, there's not, not much room over there for anything. Thank you.
So would I be, I'm not sure, somebody who was just up here, just so I can get some clarification. Am I correct or incorrect in my understanding of what you're saying is, of the unit owners or unit users that you have there now, they are not following the rules, is that it?
Well, that, that's a question for them as.
Well, that's why I'm asking them to get back up, because they sat down before I was done, so, just so I can understand. So the, the folks you have currently renting, owning, renting units are not following the rules, is that it?
No, not at all, sorry. Most of the people that are in our complex are owners. A lot of times, there's this landscaping company there, there's a, the roofing company is just a spurs, we do have a metal shop there. Parking becomes crazy. The employees will come in, sometimes they'll park and believe it or not.
I think I got the, the gist of what you're saying, but I guess my next question would be, and you are addressing that, how?
By, we, we actually are out in a parking lot all the time, that's pretty much my job. I'm out in that parking lot pretty much most of the day, making sure that the stuff is parked correctly and not double parked in our lot.
But if I understand what you're saying is, the current people you have are the ones who are in violation, correct?
I'm not going to say they're in violation, but they're certainly not paying attention, is what I'll say to you.
Paying attention, I'm not sure what that means.
Paying attention to parking and being courteous to the other people.
So the other units, if I understood it correctly, you guys are, you guys have three spaces that go with this?
Yes, according to what we were told.
Is that the same for the other units, or?
Yes, yes.
So when you say not paying attention, just, I just want to make sure I'm clarifying here, so if I'm picking unit one, I'm just going to say one, I'm going to make up a number, they also have three spaces that go with their unit?
Exactly.
And they're using more than the three spaces they're supposed to use, is that accurate?
Sometimes that happens, yes, but I'm more adamantly upset about, they'll come in at 5:00 AM, they'll park their cars in a pattern that won't allow proper parking. They'll take up two parking spots when I want them to take up one.
You, you understand where I'm going with this, right?
I do understand where you're going.
Which is, your current.
I understand exactly where you're going.
Your current users appear to be your problem, but your, your issue is with a potential user who has not in fact done anything, or given indication that they will do anything that will exacerbate or not the problem you currently have with the union is you currently have.
But the, the problem that I feel is going to happen, the equipment that he has is very large equipment. I never knew what this equipment was till he showed me one of his cards. Are you familiar with his equipment?
Yes, I am.
Do you know what a law is?
Law, yeah.
Okay, and, and 10 of them?
So, but I guess I'm going to ask for some clarification.
Yeah.
Sure.
Are you allowed to simply put all of your equipment on the site?
All of our equipment?
Like, are you, is that even allowed on the site? Would you be able to do that?
Where we are now, or where?
No, in this site?
In this site, at 820 Livingston Street. We were told that we could have, we had three parking spots. So what we wanted it to do is take down the walls inside the building, so the building is 1,500 square feet, we can easily fit four machines in our shop if it, once, once it's done, because we've done it before where we are now. And most of them are rented out, so 10 pieces of equipment will never be there at the same time, it has never happened.
Regardless, you don't have the ability, meaning the rules would not allow 10 pieces of equipment to be there anyways.
Correct.
Because you have three parking spots, correct?
Right, and to clarify that, we are not, in the, right now, we have a person that's allowing us to rent our machines, I mean, to store our machines at his site. And we keep most of our machines there. The only time that we bring in our machines is if they need maintenance or repair work, because we cannot do it on this person's.
So let me see, but just so I'm understanding, it is, even though the category lists storage, it is not your intention to store vehicles at the site, they will be stored elsewhere, but only brought onsite when there's work being done with them?
Correct.
Okay. So before I go too much further, if that's one of the limitations you're willing to accept?
The three parking spots?
That, that you will, that the site will not, you will not bring the, the, machines onsite for storage purposes, that they will only be brought onsite for maintenance purposes, and that at no point will they exceed the number that you can have either inside or using the spaces that go with your unit as a condition of your permit being approved, then we may be able to go somewhere.
Okay.
But I understand why the listing requires storage as a wording in the definition, because it's in there.
Right.
But clearly, storage is not, for the, for the number of units you, machines, number of machines you have, you wouldn't be able to store all of that onsite anyways.
No.
You don't have the capacity for it in your unit and what's allowed for your unit, whether inside or outside.
Correct.
You just can't do it. So you wouldn't be allowed to do it, and we can solve that problem right now, if we do the permit, to limit that, so that you can do what you do onsite in terms of maintenance, but storage isn't going to really be an option for you, you know, to store your, your equipment onsite.
Not even inside the building?
Well, no, I don't care, inside doesn't bother these guys, it's not going to, it's not jacking up their parking lot.
So you're talking just the three spots?
Then they can go back to dealing with all the other people that are renting there that are apparently jacking up their parking lot.
Right.
So that, you know, that becomes a condo issue and they can deal with that amongst themselves, that's not really for us to deal with.
Right.
They can't get the people who rent there or own there to do what they're supposed to do, it's not really our concern. But if your stuff isn't exacerbating that problem, I suspect they shouldn't be knocking on your door, they can go back to knocking on the other doors. But, you know, obviously this storage issue is a concern, that's legitimate.
Yes.
When you say if all of a sudden your stuff shows up there, now you got a problem.
Right.
So this is, this is something that, you know, we can limit right now and say that's not going to be an option for you to do. It's just to do your work inside your unit, and you have your three spaces, that's it. There is no bleeding out into anything else there with your, your machines or anything.
Okay.
Okay?
Also, I wanted to clarify for that gentleman, as far as us test driving, these machines are not road machines, they're basically picked up and dropped off. We don't drive them anywhere. As far as driving them on the site, it wouldn't happen. A truck driver picks them up, brings them to whatever job site they need to go to, and then they will drop them back off.
Okay, alright. I'm sorry, did you have something else? I apologize.
No, no, I'm just listening.
There was another person, I think there was.
Yes, Michael, Michael wanted to speak for a moment. One question, who would monitor that?
Who would monitor what?
The three at a clip.
The three what?
Three units at a time. Who would be your job?
Three parking spaces, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, that's cool. That's the, I would suspect the same way you do it currently with your other unit owners.
That's okay.
If you have enough of an issue and it keeps becoming a problem, obviously it's going to find its way back here, at which point we're going to have a problem if you're not following what you're supposed to be doing, at which point your permit becomes in jeopardy potentially, because we gave you rules, if you're not following them and that gets back here, then it does become our problem. So, you know, you do what you're supposed to do, then no one ever comes back here.
And Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me to clarify, so the process for that would be is, they would, if they are granted this special permit, I was writing it down right now, that one of the conditions of approval would be that equipment onsite storage outside of the building would be limited to their three deeded parking spaces, so that becomes a part of their, their zoning decision. And if at any time after, you know, we always recommend that neighbors talk to each other first rather than, you know, running down here at, you know, the stroke of 7:30 when the building department opens, if after discussions amongst neighbors, condo owners, et cetera, an agreement can't be reached, then a formal complaint can be made to the building commissioner, and as is the zoning enforcement officer, he has the responsibility to uphold the conditions of the special permit. And that would be the process by which the special permit could be revoked by this board. But, you know, we hope to never get to those kinds of points, but that is the path for that kind of conflict, specifically with this application, because they are coming to this board for a special permit, as the chairman indicated, we don't really have any control over any of the other owners or tenants unless they have a special permit with a condition like that for a remedy.
Okay, I understand. One last question, how are the units delivered?
I'm sorry?
How do they come to our location? Because I'm not familiar with your equipment. How, how do you deliver one of your units to 820 Livingston Street?
On a, on a track trail.
Okay, so they'll come in on like, on a flatbed?
Yes.
Okay, alright, a little more confusion, you know, to the location, we'll have to make sure. These guys don't understand what 820 is about, if they drove by, they'd understand, very thin driveways going through a place. Hey, like I say, it's going to happen what's going to happen. Do you guys want these letters from these other owners?
Yep, you can turn them. What I would suggest is, you know, if you, I suspect you're, you're going to have some, you know, fair warning when you're bringing in, you know, one of your units to be worked on or whatever, you know, any effort you can make to give, you know, your, your fellow unit owners the heads up, you know, that you've got one of those coming in, because he's not wrong, that, you know, you bring the flatbed in, you need room to do what you you need room to do what you gotta do to get it in, get it out. You know, obviously, you know, good neighbor policy is not unwise. You know, rather than just having it show up, and, you know, if you can say something, say something. Obviously, it's not a condition, I wouldn't suggest it as a condition. I'm just saying, you know, just to, you know, to make everything run as smoothly as possible alongside everyone.
That's what our plan is.
If you have forewarning that, you know, you're gonna be bringing that in between eight and ten on Monday, you might as well let people know that that's coming in. And if you don't, you don't, that's great, you know what I mean? Then, you know, nobody needs a heads up, because you don't have anything coming in that day.
Correct.
Like I said, just, you know, for whoever it might affect most, whoever's next to you, whatever, in front of you, that kind of thing. You know, that makes the most sense.
Yes, he's the one next door to us.
Before you comment, I just wanna let the last gentleman speak.
How you doing? My name's Mike Terode. I own unit two and three at eight twenty Livingston Street. Concern that I have, obviously, with covered that, is the parking. Parking is crazy. Fortunately, I'm on the road most of the time, so I come back and I'll see, you know, in the morning, I'm there extremely early, and then I'm there extremely late. That parking lot is somewhat filled. So my concern is, what's the largest, longest part of your equipment?
Probably twenty feet.
Twenty feet. What is considered a parking space?
Well, I was gonna, you know, you know how you got?
You gotta speak into the microphone.
I was thinking behind the building. I was gonna put them behind the building, you know, this, how you have your section from your, from, from wall to wall. If you got twenty-five feet, I was gonna take that section and park them in the back, that would be out of the way. Nope. They can't park them back there?
Can't park them back there. Not building in the nose? Can't park that, that twenty-five, that little section there? There's no parking.
Does this stuff park back there now, though? I don't understand why there wouldn't be.
That's, that's for dumpster sites, so no, you're not talking behind the building, you're talking.
Excuse me, one, one moment, gentlemen, if you're going to speak, we need you to go in the microphone for the recording secretary, thank you.
You're talking the side of the building, not the rear of the building, correct, in between the neighbors, right?
I can't park behind the rear of the, where you go out your back door, that section you can't park there?
No, there's no parking between us and the neighbor in back of us. On the side, there's some parking.
Just for clarification, can, can someone explain, your spaces are lined, correct? Where there are parking spaces, they are lined?
No, not lined.
You have no lined parking spaces?
No, it's not, they're not lined. Sorry, should be up here, not lined.
Okay. Were they ever lined?
Never. Never.
Well, I mean, this is just my own personal aside, but that may be causing part of your problem. It's that you don't have delineated parking spaces for people to park in, to then count how many parking spaces each person is using. This feels like a condo issue that you might want to address.
No doubt about it.
Because when he has three spaces, and you have three, and you have six, or whatever it is, I could see why someone would get irritated if someone just comes in, parks in a way that takes up the space that would be two parking spaces.
There you go.
With the way they park, because they haven't the faintest idea how to park, because there are no lines telling them, this is a parking space, this is not.
That's correct, no, you are correct there.
So, has anyone considered addressing that issue onsite?
To be honest with you, Mr. Peroni had spoke to me, uh, last year about we should have it lined. We said, yeah, we should, we haven't at this point, but it's true, it should be, it should be.
I mean, you, you also see my, my difficulty in, in sympathizing with the, the problems as much when the problems are being exacerbated onsite by the failure to actually delineate a parking space and say, that's one of your three. Park a car in it now, the way normal cars should be parked, in a space.
In the middle.
Sideways, not angled, in between the lines, one, two, three, one, two, three. So, that answered my other question, which is, the parking spaces that go to each unit are not specific to a unit, because you don't even have lined parking spaces.
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I just add something to it? That may be a problem that we have to deal with, and, and I understand that. The problem with his type of equipment is like an eighteen-wheel or whatever, a big truck dropping off his, in a trailer pulling in there, there's no way to turn around, we do have a parking problem, this, I don't know how these trucks and trailers are gonna pull up and back out of that. Livingston Street's a busy street, and that's the issue. We do have an issue with parking, but we can't kick people out so he could get his vehicles in there. Do you know what I'm saying?
Someone, someone said there was a, there's an auto repair place, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
That's I said.
You like regular car repairs, or like auto body, or?
Regular automobile repairs.
And do any of the vehicles that show up at your auto repair come in on a flatbed?
Yes. Yes.
You manage to get it in and out, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
A flatbed is a different thing than a truck and trailer. Like an eighteen-wheeler pulling in, pulling a, a flatbed, pulling, he's got lulls, he's got heavy equipment. So we're not talking about somebody, if he opened a business and he was, I don't know, cleaning cars or something like that, and cars were coming in and out, then he has his three spots. We're concerned with him getting his equipment in and out of there, because of the way the parking lot is set up, it is a problem.
Okay. Alright. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Alright, so you wanted to say, you need the, why don't you, why don't you just go ahead up to the, it might make more sense.
My remarks are not to contradict anything that's been said.
So, just for the purposes, again, for the secretary, just give your name again, I just moved you from the main table over there, just so.
My name is John Peterson, I'm a real estate broker. Uh, I represent the buyers. The comment I would like to make is that I don't disagree with anything they've said. The left side of the building has what appears to be banned, abandoned properties, and properties that are not even relevant to the natures of the business in some cases. It looks like people left stuff there just to get it out of the way. Some of it's rusted, some of it apparently has no purposes to being there. I mention this only because there is space on the left side of the building that is tied up unnecessarily.
Right, but hold on, you, you pointed out, but I'm gonna do to you the same thing I just did, you know, to be fair. Is, are you suggesting that that's a place where people should be putting things?
I'm suggesting that that's parking space, because it's not in the back of the building, it's on the left end of the building.
Right, but if I understood the comment earlier, they were saying that that is not an area where anything is supposed to be, is that inaccurate? Did I misunderstand that?
What he's speaking about, the stuff that belongs to the gentleman on the last bay, number unit fourteen, the stuff he's talking about, there is really no parking on the far side of the building. We have put cars back there before, we're not really supposed to be parking back there. But we're guilty of putting cars back there when there's an overflow.
Okay, but he's, he's referring to things that are just sitting there, is that not accurate?
That stuff that would be sitting there would be metal, the gentleman that owns unit fourteen, Walter Lukey, he is a prefab welder. A lot of that stuff that's in the back there is his stock. He has a cube van parked there that's full of stock, but that's his equipment.
Right, but what I was asking is, is that an area that would be meant for parking?
It was never meant for parking. We abuse it sometimes, I do. I'll put some of our cars back there to ease up the flow, and then remove them in the afternoon. Sometimes I'll put two or three cars right there. That's on the far side of the building.
Okay.
But it's not a legitimate parking where we can just park and leave them there.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Alright, so.
Mike, are you all done talking? You sure? Okay.
Alright, so with that, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, let everybody have another round. So, Mr. Fattaya, any new further comments?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. My opinion, as a planning board member, is a new business wants to come into town, but it's being restricted by parking issues at eight twenty Livingston Street. You know, he wants to come in, I know his equipment may be larger, but I hate to say no to a new business coming in, to your development, like you guys came in at some point, and, you know, restrict this gentleman from having a business in town. You know, he's already been in town, he already has a location in town, but unfortunately, he's being, have to be relocated, and he wants to come here. I don't know why he can't park his three vehicles in his three parking spots, and other equipment inside the building. I know maybe it'd be a hassle getting in and out, but everybody else has hassles in and out of that location as well, because no one's abiding by the parking regulations there. Um, I hate to have a building inspector come down to the site and cause problems for everybody at the site. Nobody wants that, I don't want that, I don't think the building inspector does either. But to say no to a business because of parking abuse at the site isn't right either. So that's my, that's my view as a planning board member, as a, as a member of town of Tewksbury, a resident of Tewksbury. Hate to say no to a guy that wants to have a business there, you know? Are there gonna be challenges? Absolutely, like you know, you guys know firsthand. But to say no to the guy without even giving him an opportunity to, to, to come in, or, or meet, or have you guys meet, and look at his equipment, and, and work out something, I just think it's unfair. He's looking for a used special permit to operate a business at that site. And to say no to him, I don't think is, is what's right. So, my opinion is.
I generally agree with my fellow board members here, and I think, um, kinda with the stipulation that the chair put in for the, uh, three spaces in the permit, I think that makes this workable.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, a couple of quick things. So, if I could ask the applicant, like, like, when they transport a lull, it, does it come like with the forks removed, and, you know, like, like, what is the, the footprint of a lull as it's, as it's being shipped in for repair?
I'm sorry, say it again, what?
What is the footprint of the, the lull when it's brought in? What is, how does it look?
Does it come disassembled, or is it?
No, no, together, all together. It just comes in, I own them, so they just come in, they come back to me, so I could serve some.
The forks can be removed?
Yes.
They're not coming back that way, that's, I think that was the answer to Mr. Duffy's question.
They leave, they leave whole, they come back whole, it's, it's not the.
But if the issue is moving them around, the forks can be removed, or?
Why, why would it take?
Well, if, if there's an issue with, with getting them in, they can.
No, no, no.
I mean, it's, it's technically not much bigger than a pickup truck. What, would I, would that be accurate?
I'm sorry, say.
Pickup truck?
Yes.
That would be fairly accurate.
That would be accurate.
I've, I've been to that parking lot, I was there today. There was absolutely no rhyme or reason to, uh, the way vehicles are, are scattered around that parking lot. There isn't, there isn't a painted line on the parking lot, I agree with you there, Mr. Chairman. And it just seems a little unfair to penalize a, uh, new potential tenant, uh, because of an existing, an existing situation that, that is, that can has obviously been kicked down the road by the association for a long time. And, um, I, I think I, I'd like to see, uh, you know, I, I just don't wanna see any, any severe restrictions put on a new tenant that nobody else is adhering to there. So, uh, because, because, you know, it's almost like we make this rule up as we go along, and that even, that even is, you know, you know, to restrict, um, you know, a tempor, temporarily parking where, where, um, where overflow parking may go. You know, why somebody else gets to park there and not, and not the new tenant? So, um, you know, if, if all, all things being equal, if that parking lot was a lot more organized, and it would probably take a, you know, take some work from, from a group of owners or the association down there, you know, to, to try to make heads or tails of it, um, I, I think you could probably resolve ninety, I don't know what we're talking about here. So, all that being said, I'm in favor of, of the, um, uh, of the used special permit, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so, alright, so Mr. Duffy got one of my questions to answer, because I'm, I'm trying to, you know, in my mind, just sort of picture the, the unit. But, you know, you said, you, how many total you have?
Ten.
Ten. Okay, and you, you seem to think you can keep up to four of them inside, correct?
Three anyways.
Three?
Three anyways, three, and then three outside, six.
And right now, we have four.
See, I was, I was under the impression that I could park behind my building, because if, you know, usually by the condo, what I've seen before, you get the space, if you go on those twenty-five, say, you get twenty-five across, and you get, you know, that's, I was under the impression before, before I started looking.
Clearly, these are numbered spaces, so that's not, that's not the case here. There are no spaces as such.
Well, I was under the impression that you could park.
Alright, but what I'm trying to figure out here is a way to make this palatable to everybody. So, you know, you, you, so you think you can get three inside, perhaps potentially four, correct?
Potentially four.
You have ten total.
Ten.
Alright, so you, you've been in business for twenty-six years?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
What is the most number of units you've had onsite at any given time, to be worked on? I mean, I don't mean, because if you're not, we've already settled the other issue, which is if they're back and they're not being worked on, they need to be the other place.
Right.
So if you, if you're working on units, you're a single operator person, you're only working on X number at any given time.
Right.
Could you possibly be working on more than three at a given time?
No, because they'll come and go, they.
You see where I'm going with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is to say, that if you limit, that you're not gonna have three onsite at any, more than three onsite at any given time, then you don't even need to use them, put them outside, you could put them inside to be dealt with. Your other units, if they're not being rented out and not being worked on, they're at this other place anyways. That's what we've already settled on. So, if that's the case, if we, you know, limit it to, you know, and I don't wanna screw you guys up here, you know, floating with this three and four number, you know, that at no point, you're gonna have more than four of these onsite to be worked on, because you're only one person, you can't possibly be working on four at once.
Let's say I had three inside, could I have three, my three parking spaces outside?
For cars, you mean?
My question would be.
For cars?
No, for my truck, for my machine.
Well, no, that's what I'm getting at, because if you're not working on them, then having them at the other site is what we've already sort of settled on. Like, the only ones that should be onsite are the ones you're gonna be working on, so not storage for work on. So if you have them there to be worked on, you can't, I just can't imagine that's, you, you, you know, no matter how good of a repair person you might be, you can only work on so many at a time.
Well, that, that was my question, though, but if, if I have three parking spaces, say, outside, I can't park three machines outside and have whatever I could fit inside, that's my question to you.
Well, I'm getting to the point where I'm thinking, as of right now, that is probably not the best course of action here, is to have.
Then why do I have three, then why do I have two?
Inside.
Then why would I have, why would they offer me three parking spaces if I can't use them? If I can't utilize them, why? I don't even know why I'm getting into this phase at this point.
Parking spaces, at least one of them is for you, because unless you walked there, you came there in a vehicle.
Right.
So you're already down one.
Okay.
Okay, so you're already talking about two spaces beyond the one you're currently parked in.
Okay.
Not three.
Right.
Right? So, but the idea is that you wanna be able to work on them. If you are stuffing two more out in the other parking spaces, why are they there if you're not working on them?
Sometimes.
Now we're back to storage, which I'm concerned about, having these out there.
Well, if that's considered storage, then this place ain't gonna work for me. Because I, you know, I thought I had, I, I was under the impression that I had three parking spaces out front, and whatever I could fit out back, and whatever I could get inside. That's how I came to this conclusion of being here.
Alright, and I can tell you how you came to that conclusion, because the only thing I know is that you get three deeded parking spaces.
Correct.
Right?
So that means I can only have three pieces there at one time?
I'm talking about what you could fit inside, you said you could fit up to three inside, correct?
Okay, yeah, three would, yeah.
So, my point was that if you were allowed to have four onsite at any given time, that would be the three inside and perhaps one outside.
Okay.
Rather than trying to jam as much in there as possible all the time.
Which would be hard, yeah.
That's four, four of your machines.
Correct.
On site at any given time, if you even need that.
Okay.
Is that sufficient for you to be able to do your repairs that you need to do onsite? Because if your units just aren't rented out, then they should be at the storage place, not onsite.
Well, the whole point is, we were trying, because we have to pay for that storage, so we're trying to eliminate, you know, paying somebody else.
What you told us was that most of the time, they're, they're rented out.
Yes, they are.
Gonna need to be back, so I'm trying to work with what you're telling me, I'm also trying to make it work for the site.
Right.
Because again, the more units you have on there at any given time, the more times you gotta be bringing in the flatbeds to move them in and out, which is clearly a potential problem onsite. So I'm trying to make this work sort of for everybody. I don't wanna handicap or hamstring what you do, but at the same time, I'm also trying to take into consideration reality, which is, you know, I'm looking at the site too, it's not a huge movable site in terms of, you know, people coming in and bringing in big trucks and whatnot, you know, often, and, you know, things in the way and whatnot. So I'm just trying to work out what, what is palatable across the board.
Just to add on to that, our business is very unpredictable. I mean, there, there are times when we have two pieces of equipment going out in one month. Sometimes, we don't have anything going out for several months. They just stay out on rent. It all depends on the contractor that obviously rents from us, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that I really think you're gonna be coming in and out constantly.
Right, no.
That wasn't my implication, but, but what I'm saying is, the idea is, what's going on on the site is repair and maintenance.
It's just, yeah, minor repairs, yeah.
Reason for having that site.
Correct.
Is a place to be able to do that work. So, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is, you know, how many units do you really need to have onsite at any given time if they're not out?
If they're not out.
That's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, two seconds ago, we were up to as many as like, you know, six, because you were like, three over here, three in here, three inside, you know, nine.
Well, I was thinking I could utilize that space, but apparently I can't.
I understand, and I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not, I was not privy to any of those parts of your conversation with whoever you had those conversations with. But it doesn't sound like from what, either what you found, when you told us when you came in, which is you only have three deeded parking spaces. So, anything beyond those spaces you thought you were gonna be able to use, I don't know why you thought that, but it's not really up to me to figure out anyways. All I know is what I'm being told, which is, the unit comes with X number of spaces.
Right.
Just like every other unit comes with X number of spaces. And those unit owners should not be exceeding theirs any more than you should be. Different issue for a different person to deal with. But, you know, you see what I'm saying? If they do that, and you do that, that's where this problem is occurring.
Right.
Because people are exceeding what they should be using. You gotta move the mic over.
They have three allotted spaces, right? Can they use those spaces for whatever?
Just one second, let me just let him finish.
Can they use those spaces for whatever they decide they wanna park there?
That's what I'm trying to decide. That's what I'm trying to decide, honestly. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, because there's limos and.
Trying to manage this in a way that works sensibly.
Sure.
So, all right, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, one more quick point I would like to make. I, I think that for us to impose a set of restrictions on one unit out of, uh, uh, however many units there are there, um, that, um, not, at least by not, by the planning board are applicable. I think that's a little bit of a slippery slope. I think it's pretty unfair, um, for, for opposition to come to the planning board, ask us to impose restrictions on a potential tenant without really even knowing how it's gonna impact an already bad situation and then ask us if we're the ones that are gonna be down there enforcing it. Um, so, I, I think we should think about that. Um, uh, you know, think about that, like, I don't know that a new tenant should be subject to any, to restrictions any different than any other tenant there.
Fair enough.
And that's really kind of all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Fattalia, is that a sentiment that you agree with?
Well, I don't think the free parking spot restriction is anything different than anybody else, Mr. Duffy. I mean, um, that's the big question, right?
Finney?
So, the three parking spots is the question, right? And I don't think that's a restriction anybody else is going over either. I mean, he's gonna have restrictions coming in and out, but so does everybody else with equipment. But if he, if he maintains his three parking spots, then he has every right to those spots like everybody else. I don't think it's an unburdened restriction.
Well, I guess the question is, is, I, I guess my question would be then, is every unit have three parking spaces over there?
I'm not sure, Mr. Duffy, but I don't.
Is it?
If he maintains his three parking spots, whether he puts equipment there or two pickup trucks or, or one pickup truck and two, and two lulls and they fit, then, then he should be able to use his parking spots, in my opinion. He's, he bought the unit, uses three parking spots wherever he wants.
Yeah, I think that.
Hopefully, hopefully it won't be an issue.
Any of the other tenants, Vinnie?
I think that's.
Mr. Fattalia, are any of the other tenants using any of the overflow parking over there? It appears to me, if you drive through that parking lot, that everybody is parked neatly in, in three spaces in front of their building. So, um, that's all I'm saying is that there is no rhyme or reason to the current parking situation and I don't think that, I don't think that anything other than what everybody else has to do over there, the three parking spaces, for example, is, um, it would be, you know, you know, I just don't think that it's, um, you know, up to the planning board to decide any, anything further than that, I should say.
Okay. Lizzardi, any further?
Um, I think I agree with the sentiment. There's three deeded parking spots here. You can use them however you like, however many pieces of equipment you actually manage to get inside kind of the space.
Okay.
If you get four in there, if you get five in there, if you buy smaller ones and you get ten in there, I don't think it makes any sense to, to specifically restrict that part. But the three outside spaces seems like as good of a compromise as we can come to that you have three spaces for your use. You put equipment in there, if you put your truck in there, if you have whatever you need in there. How to enforce it without lines, other than kinda going around? You can probably pretty easily count the three pieces of equipment, but, um, like, it seems, seems like this lot has some major issues. It probably doesn't fall to us to resolve those issues there, but as far as the compromise of three, using the three spots, I agree with that.
Okay. I'm sure. Just give your name again.
Tom Peroni. Uh, I just have one question. I was Googling lulls just 'cause, you know, I, I don't know much about them, but, um, I got, you know, there's all different sizes and I don't know why they give it to you in inches, but we have anywhere from two-hundred-and-sixty to three-hundred-and-twenty-five inches. So, what I did is I just took an average of two, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-five inches, divided that by twelve, and that's almost twenty-three feet.
Yeah, that's what I said, twenty, twenty.
All right, I'm saying the bay is only twenty-four feet deep. How we fit in three machines? The bay is what?
Sixty-five.
The bay's sixty-five feet deep?
Sixty-five.
No.
Sixty.
I have a bay.
Sixty, I'm sorry.
It's sixty feet deep?
No.
It's fifteen by.
I measured it six times, it's sixty feet.
Anyways, that's all I want to bring up, so.
I, maybe I was using the Italian.
You are entitled to your three spots. I don't think anybody has any problem with that.
I'm sorry?
Even, you're entitled to your three spots. I don't think anybody has an issue with that. I think the issue is getting the vehicles, getting your lulls in and out of.
You need something moved up there, it moves for you.
All right, can't, we can't be doing that, though.
Okay, but my thing is, is I took an average. Some are bigger, some are smaller.
I agree.
Um, so I just took the average and the average machine that I got is around twenty-three feet.
Right, that's what I said about.
And actually, I'm looking at it now and it says that's without the forks.
So, how long is the, the garage is sixty feet long? I mean, if the things are twenty, I could fit three in there, back to back to back.
All right, so wait, wait, we're not gonna keep doing this.
I just want to.